It is 6:35, so is there a motion to open the November 2nd, 2020 Board of Education meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open up the voting.
There I am.
Oh, now we have Jeff.
I'm on Scott.
That's unanimous.
Great, so with that, join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we will move on to item 3.1 of our agenda, the public input section. So if you're joining us, you can ask about something on the agenda tonight, something not on the agenda. If we have an answer, we'll give it to you this evening. If not, we will get back to you on it. With that, you could either raise your hand or put a question into the chat room. Scott, anybody with hands raised?
Yes, hang on one second. Jim Kinnear.
Okay. Unmute Jim, he can give us his full name and he has three minutes.
Hi, this is Jim Kinnear, math teacher. Am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear you, Jim.
Terrific. I just wanted to address the possibility of bringing high school students in on Wednesdays. First of all, I'm not speaking as Tash president, I'm speaking as a teacher and a community member. I'm thankful and grateful for the support that the board has given the school district, the administration and the teachers and the students since March over the summer and continuing through now. Personally, I didn't think that we would last in school this long. I didn't have a prediction for how long we would last, but I didn't think we'd be continuing to bring students in the school into November. That's a testament to a good plan and that this plan is being well carried out. I do understand how difficult it is for the students. Sitting at home staring at a screen three days a week is very, very challenging. I do understand what they're going through. However, we are in the midst of a surge in positive infections, both nationwide and worldwide. Locally, in, according to Newsday, in the last two and a half weeks in the Sag Harbor region, we've had five infections, whereas before that, it was one in the previous 10 weeks. The benefit of bringing the students in would mean that the students would get an average of about three hours a week, being that they'd come in every other day, every other week. And in my mind, this doesn't outweigh the increased probability of spread and possibly lead lead to full closure. Assuming that this Wednesday is too early, there's only one Wednesday in November. I asked the board to consider waiting a month to see how this pandemic goes, both nationally and locally. If there's not much of a spread, then we can open it up further. Ultimately, I believe the best way to keep them in two days a week is to keep them in two days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other hands or messages in the chat room? I see nothing in the chat room.
No hands.
I don't see any other hands raised. Okay. With that, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Fine. So let me start by saying that tomorrow is Election Day and the Sag Harbor Schools, Pearson High School is a polling place. So the polls will open at 6:00 AM tomorrow and be open through 9:00 PM. For those who who do not know, the machines, the voting machines are stationed in the high school gymnasium and people voting are to enter off the Jermaine Street parking lot. So voters are not permitted in the school, so they could not, they cannot enter through the Division Street side or through the back of the school, through the Montauk Lot entrance. All voters will have to enter, as in past years, through the Jermaine Lot. And we will have personnel stationed there because of COVID-19 to make sure that that portion of the building is the only portion of the building that voters are able to access. And then following the vote, when the Suffolk County Board of Elections departs, that part of the building will be thoroughly cleaned by the custodial staff. Second thing I wanted to talk about is a recent change to the way New York is dealing with travel, specifically when New York residents choose to travel outside of the state. So formerly, when you traveled to a state not contiguous with New York, you were subject to a 14-day quarantine if the state you traveled to appeared on the New York State list and you were there for more than 24 hours. The latter half of last week, the governor changed that. And I'm going to read directly from the guidance so that we're crystal clear in what the the rule is moving forward. And it says, "For any traveler to New York State from out of state exempting the contiguous states, the new guidelines for travelers to test out of the mandatory 14-day quarantine are below. For travelers who were in another state for more than 24 hours, travelers must obtain a test within three days of departure from that state." So if I was, let's say, for argument's sake, in Ohio, within three days of leaving that state, I would have to get a test. The traveler must, upon arrival in New York, quarantine for three days. So regardless of the results of that test taken in the state that they came from, you have to quarantine for three days. On day four of their quarantine, the traveler must obtain another COVID test. If both tests come back negative, that is the test that they took prior to departing the state that they traveled to and the test they took on day four. If both of those tests come back negative, the traveler may exit quarantine early upon receipt of the second negative diagnostic test. So that's situation number one. For travelers who are in another state for less than 24 hours, that means that, exactly what it says, I traveled to another state that's not contiguous with New York, but I was less, I was in that state for less than 24 hours. The traveler does not need a test prior to their departure from the other state and does not need to quarantine upon re-entering New York State. However, the traveler must fill out the traveler information form upon entry into New York State and take a COVID test four days after their arrival in New York. So in both of these scenarios, where I've traveled to a state not contiguous that appears, and stayed there for more than 24 hours, or I've traveled to a state not contiguous and stayed there for less than 24 hours, in both of those situations, you have to take a test on day four. The difference is that if you're in a state for less than 24 hours, you are not required to take the test within three days of departing that state. So we will put this on the website so that people can reference it. We had planned on sending out a letter to the community as we approached the holidays, reminding them of the guidance that was out there. But with this change, we needed to reformat that letter, but we will put that out this week so that people can plan for the holidays accordingly. Related to that, there has been a lot of discussion pertaining to how are the Sag Harbor Schools going to address the holiday period? There are some rumors out there that we are going to extend the school break around Christmas time for two weeks. Not true. There are some other rumors out there that we will not be in session from Thanksgiving until the winter or Christmas break. Not true. At this point, the calendar that was established by the, or adopted by the Board of Education is still in effect. If there are any changes to that calendar, as was the case, for instance, with Superintendent's Conference Day, which I'll talk about in a minute, we notify the community, and again, that has not happened with regard to any of the the scheduled school breaks. Any questions about anything that I've talked about thus far before I move on to additional topics?
Jeff, this is Yorgos. I had a question. Has anything changed with international travel? How it's going to be the quarantine? Is it still like the 14 days or is it like just the three days?
I did not see anything in the guidance that spoke to that. But it may, I can get back to the board on that. I'm not sure if this guidance that I read applies to international travel as well. Any other questions?
Jeff, this is Chris. I believe that international travel is governed by the national rules and not the state. If I'm correct, so it wouldn't have been impacted by Governor Cuomo's announcement.
Great.
Is there anybody from the public that would have a question? You can raise your hand or put the question in the chat room while we're waiting on that. Are there any other board questions up to this point for Mr. Nichols? Okay, I don't see anyone in the chat room. I don't see any hands raised. So Jeff, proceed, please.
So the the third topic I'd like to discuss is the proposal that the administrators are considering, and you've heard Mr. Kinnear talk a little bit about it during Public Input 1, and that is expanding instruction in grades nine through 12 to essentially two and a half days a week. So if you recall, our reopening plan has, for students in grades nine through 12, half of the student body studying on Monday and Tuesday, the other half studying on Thursday and Friday, and then Wednesday being an all-remote day. In our lens, the lens that we've applied to any expansion of in-person school or schooling has always been health and safety first. The proposal that we're putting forward does not mix those two cohorts. In other words, this week, for instance, the students, if we were to adopt this, who studied Monday and Tuesday would study on Wednesday, and then the following week, the students who studied on Thursday and Friday would study on Wednesday. The important part of that is that those two groups of students, two cohorts, if you will, would not be mixing on Wednesdays. So from a virus transmissibility perspective, I don't see a significant increase in transmissibility making this switch, and that's why we're considering the proposal. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions or thoughts, comments with respect to that? And so Jeff, I will. So that's being discussed between you and the building principals at this point for logistics. You see, you're going to come back to us with a proposal as to, if it works from a logistics standpoint, when you would suggest implementing that?
Correct.
I personally think if we can get the high school kids back into the building safely for another day, you know, based on what the administrator, administration is recommending to us, I think that's, that would be a benefit as long as we can do it safely to continue what we're, how we're being successful now. But I think we need to wait at this time and hear from you, Jeff, and the administrators as to how that can happen and if that can happen.
I agree.
Now, I agree as well. I just also just like to thank the K through eight teachers that have been doing their due diligence every day, and we really greatly appreciate that under, following the protocol that we have. So thank you to those teachers.
Mr. Nichols, what do you think the timeline is where you would be prepared to come back to the board with your recommendation, formal recommendation?
I would, I wanted to update you tonight, but the recommendation would probably be before the next board meeting. I would communicate with you via email, but I would think that it doesn't require a formal adoption if we just brought the students back another day a week. So in answer to your question, I think this decision could be made within the next week.
Terrific. Well, I just want to share, I think it is a terrific idea. Again, acknowledging how great not only the plan was, but all the staff and families have been working so hard to implement it in a way that's safe. And the more classroom time we can have with students, the better. We hear from students that are choosing to go, you know, their families are choosing to go into the building, that the time is really valuable and the high school students that are attending, you know, a lot of the feedback is they wish they had more time in the, in the school. So this is just a positive, but we can make it work. Thank you.
I do, I do want to just, and you know, I'm very cautious, but I, I, what I said is true. I don't think that this specific switch carries a significant increase in transmissibility of the virus, but we should bear in mind that we are going into the colder months. We, as Mr. Kinnear said, we have, I don't know if I would call it a surge, but we've seen an uptick in the amount, with a percentage of test-positive cases. And if we look to Europe or to other parts of the country that are perhaps a little colder than ours, we're seeing some pretty alarming growth. So obviously, we do, while we make this switch, we have to be very cautious and diligent in making sure we monitor what's going on, and if we see things escalate or worsen, then we'll revisit things.
Thanks. I did see one comment in the chat box that said from the public that one extra day every other week may not seem like much, but any break from the monotony of sitting at home in front of a computer is a huge help for my daughter. So it's good to know. And I know we're not going to do anything that's not safe, so we'll wait to hear from you, Jeff, as to what you, direction you give in terms of that.
Great. Sorry.
What'd you say, Andy? Yeah, I just want to say that it's been our goal all along to get, you know, K through 12, pre-K through 12 in the building as much as possible. So, you know, if Jeff and and his administrative team feels that it's safe to do this now, then I wholeheartedly back them. And I think that, I agree with the person in the chat room, that even if it's one extra day every other week, it's very important for children's mental health and we'll be safe. I mean, we obviously are doing a pretty good job, but we can't control everything, but what we can control, let's move forward.
Okay, back to you, Jeff.
Yeah, so I just have one more, I had referenced it earlier, one more update on the school calendar, and that is that tomorrow was originally slated to be the Superintendent's Conference Day. And we made a decision several weeks ago to have that be an instructional day primarily for two reasons. Number one, as multiple people have said tonight, we're prioritizing instructional time and trying to have our students interact with our teachers as frequently as possible. And number two, I think that the likelihood is looking at other districts and what's happening, both in New York State and domestically and internationally, we will see an uptick. And when you do see an uptick, generally, you have to close school. Maybe not for weeks, but maybe for a day or two while the Suffolk County Department of Health locally conducts contact tracing. So knowing that that may very well happen in the future, it would seem to me prudent to have the students in school interacting with teachers versus having a Superintendent's Conference Day. So that's the logic behind the switch.
Oh, and we thought that was a great recommendation on your part, Jeff, and appreciate all the cooperation from administration, teachers, teachers association, everyone else to make that happen. So I think it's great.
All right, so that that pretty much does it for my superintendent's report.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nichols before we move on to the administrators? Principals? Okay, move on to Agenda Item 6.1, the Principals Report and Upcoming Events.
Why don't we start with Mr. Malone?
Okay, good, good evening, everyone. I think I can give you a quick update from the elementary school. I think first and foremost, the procedures we have in place, as, as many have mentioned, have, you know, been, been successful thus far. One piece that's a big part of the plan at the elementary school is, is the time that we're working to get the cohorts outside. Mask breaks built in multiple times during the day as well as recess, and you know, that's been positive for many reasons, fresh air, but also a lot of good exercise each day. We're going to continue that unless the weather is so bad, we're getting outside. So today was a good example. It was, it was pretty chilly, very windy, but, but we were outside. So I just recommend that families think about how they're sending the children to school and make sure they're prepared. Gloves, sweatshirts, hats would be, would be appropriate heading into these colder months because it's an important piece of our daily routine. The elementary school operates on trimester schedule, so we, we do report cards three times a year. And we also distribute progress reports midway through each of the trimesters, and we've, we've reached that point. So today, progress reports for grades one through five were posted to our parent portal so parents can access those progress reports just to kind of get an overview of how the children have been doing since, sort of in September. Couple fun updates. Halloween was Friday is a little different than our normal Halloween tradition. We usually have our fun parade downtown, but it was a great day. Big thank you to the staff. We spent an afternoon last Thursday decorating the whole building. All the faculty members stayed after school and decorated the halls. And then when the children came in on Friday, they, you know, they entered into haunted hallways throughout the school. So it was fun and everybody was in costume. And also a big thank you to our PTA and parent volunteers who also helped out with decorations and setups at the different entrances. That was great to see. Heading into the holidays, we, we have a couple of great service projects that have been longstanding at the elementary school. Our food drive will begin next Monday. We'll kick that off and share information with families about that. And this year, Veterans Day falls on a Wednesday, November 11th. Schools are, morning program on the 10th will be dedicated to our veterans. It'll be a different tribute than normal. Usually, we have a chance to invite the veterans in and we provide them with a nice breakfast. But we'll dedicate morning program to all those who have served our country and be able to say thank you from the elementary school. That's the update from Sag Harbor Elementary.
Thank you, Matt. Ms. Carriero?
Yep. Hi all. So again, mask breaks, we're continuing them outside, just like Mr. Malone said. Please make sure your children are dressed appropriately. We reminded them, a lot of them, when they were getting out of the cars and off the bus this morning, that jackets are very appropriate, as well as hats and gloves. Our college processes started for our seniors. We had eight students apply early decision, 67 apply early action for the, for the first deadline, which was due on November 1st. And we have 34 students that are applying early action to, and early decision to for the November 15th deadline, which is a good number. Miss Motto has been heading that. Red Ribbon Week happened this past week. Friday was a fun day to see even our staff. We had Slash, a unicorn, and a Day of the Dead teacher in full blown, blown garb, as well as two T-Rexes in the back of one of our student pods. So it was fun to see the school alive and fun, and they were appreciative that they could wear masks this year. College Information Night will be upcoming for the 17th. Our first marking period sadly went quickly. It will, it will end on the 13th, I believe, and the 16th is the start of quarter two. So in the middle high school, we have four quarters. So we are starting the second quarter, starting on the 16th. Our conversation with administrators will resume on the end, at the end of this week on Friday. We have broken it up because we've realized during this pandemic, there are different concerns for our six through eight parents and our nine through 12 parents, and we take an hour of our time to do that. We did take a little bit of a breather as we've been working diligently on looking at section numbers and trying to look at different scenarios and talking to different administrators in different schools on what they're doing and best practices, because remember, nobody is an expert in this pandemic and social distancing. Trick or Trash, our student council has been doing a fundraising for that. It's to collect the trash for the food and to raise awareness. And then our food drive, our middle school is doing a pod versus pod where they have to bring in food, but they, the twist this year is that they give it to their other grade pods, so they want to be the classroom pod with the least amount of food, as well as our high school student council would be involved in that as well for the food drive. So that's what's going on. We are trying to keep busy and keeping our spirits alive during this pandemic.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Brittany. Onto Item 7.1, the Athletics Report.
So I'm going to do that tonight for Mr. Bramoff, and I have four things to talk about. Number one, as per the last meeting, offseason workouts have begun. There are voluntary on the part of the coaches and the players. I've witnessed a few, Ms. Carriero's witnessed a few. Basically, each session attendance is taken so that in the event that we ever had a positive case, we could turn over that information to the Department of Health so they could effectively contact trace. We're trying to keep the number of participants low, around six to eight at most, so that we can maintain social distancing. And due to some developments in neighboring districts, shared sports, offseason workouts have been postponed. So they are not running at this time. The second development is that, and this is sort of old news, but I'll touch upon it. There are three seasons, basically Section 11, which is the local entity of, that governs our area for the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, has taken the, the seasons and condensed them into a smaller segment of time. So the fall season will begin January 1. The winter season, March 1, and the spring season, April 26. Those are the first days of practices for each of those respective seasons. And hopefully, if the numbers, the COVID numbers cooperate, which is a big if at this point, we can get those sports seasons in. And in anticipation of that, Section 11 actually released the schedules for the first season on the website within the last day or two. So the winter season, those games and the attached schedules are there for the public to view. And then the last thing I want to address is that the installation of the solar-powered scoreboard at Mash Ash Amuut began today. So hopefully, that'll be done and it'll be a great addition to our sports program, which hopefully we'll, we'll get back to sooner rather than later.
Great. Thanks for providing that update, Jeff. Any board questions for Matt or Brittany or Jeff on anything we've covered so far? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda item. Is there a motion? Items 8.1 through 8.13.
So moved?
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mary, if you could open up the voting, please.
That's unanimous.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to item nine point one, new new agenda items, no new agenda items. Item ten point one, items for discussion. I would ask, at this point, Sandy did just recently attend a continuing educational seminar. So I would ask Sandy if you would update the board, maybe as a practice going forward, we're going to discuss at future meetings, some board policies, but when you attend these, if we can provide the board and other members of administration and public an update, I think it might be helpful. So Sandy?
Great. Love to. I just want to say thank you to Mary because she helped me get into the convention and I was like freaking because I couldn't get in that morning and she did everything. So thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
First of all, the convention opened with keynote speakers this year, and it was from the book called The Pact, and it was about three black men who came from pretty much the worst place in New Jersey. And they got into about seventh grade and they got it, two went into juvie homes and no parents, drugs, crime, and they had a teacher who made a difference. And her name was Mrs. Johnson. And Mrs. Johnson took the three boys after school everything and she really worked with them. And they said that they knew they were famous when Oprah called them to be on her show. I have goosebumps talking about it. It was really amazing. These three young black kids who came from the projects of New Jersey made a pact with Mrs. Johnson and they all went to Seton Hall. And they all became doctors. One was a dentist, one was an intern, obesity specialist, and the other was head of an ER. And they started a foundation to give back to kids from this district. And so far, they have put two hundred kids through colleges. So it was really inspiring when teachers think, oh, my God, my day is so horrible. And what am I going to do? And this is really awful. It was really cool to see how this one teacher they spoke about nonstop had made such an amazing difference in their lives. So that I thought was just really, if you have a chance, pick up the book. It's called The Pact. I did another one on health, safety in school, and it was really about, are we mentally teaching our kids to live in the moment? And to leave their small towns behind them, which I'm not sure we at Sag Harbor do. So I thought that was a really interesting thing. You know, this is just such a small community, and that's what they spoke about. And how do you get kids to go into the big cities and really understand what it's like, what it's like? So I talked about danger risk assessments. So kids knew when they left small communities like this. So that was actually pretty good. Date, and then the third one I did was on COVID and buildings and how to clean. And I have to tell you all, Sag Harbor was like ahead of the curve on that. So I was really proud to sit there and be able to type in like, yep, do that, yep, do that, yep. So just going to say kudos to you guys. Day two, education commissioner, chancellor on regions, discussed again, mental health in these times, like they could not stress that enough. How is success being measured and the difference between a diploma and a regular job slash BOSI's program, how they're actually one of the same. I did a lot of stuff on communications because we're going to start a communication committee. And I attended four of those.
We started.
What?
It started.
Yeah, I'm ready to get started. I actually had sent the board some, one about how to, you know, the package that we got with that. And one was called Bring the Media on the Board. They talked about having a trained media consultant. That print is still critical. As much as we don't think it is, it really is. Solid infrastructure, never respond anything personally. So our board president is our speaker and everything should go through the board president. Social media moves too fast for us to even keep up on it sometimes and that we shouldn't. But we should not be afraid of social media because it's actually our friend. Any personal views should only be discussed on Zoom or in a in a meeting with the board. It should not be discussed outside. So they said, like, if you were to get asked to do an interview on a subject, you really should decline that because you're taking your views instead of the Board of Educations. They talked about letters to the editor should never be signed as a Board of Ed member, basically just things on how we can become a more cohesive board and how we can accept the media into our, you know, bring it in instead of thinking it's always against us. And then I, like, I have so much that I'll deal with Scott and the group about, but basically be ahead of all the problems, be transparent, especially during difficult times. Word retreats are really important and we should do more of those. I have her name to bring in if we ever wanted to. And then one of the last ones I did was understand the needs of the LGBT community. And that was an interesting one because, you know, I have I have experienced this firsthand. So it was interesting that we say that we tolerate versus accept in communities. And do we really do enough? Do we, do we put that in our social media? Do we have that on the front pages of our websites? Are teachers okay to say that they're gay? It started in Smithtown and he started a thing called Jonah's Mission. And he spoke about how his son was afraid to come to him because he was a transgender because his father was the athletic director, eventually became the superintendent. So he made it his mission, like when you're doing college searches like we just talked about, do we have gender fluid colleges? Are there dorms that are gender fluid for kids? It was probably the most emotional one we attended because it was made up of a panel of twenty students from schools all over New York State. And they spoke about, you know, their feelings and their actions and and what is really not enough. So I'd love to come into the diversity community committee and just give an update on that in more detail. And I'd like to, you know, possibly recommend him coming in and doing a a Zoom slash session with our students and teachers because he does do that also. So a lot of information, it was packed into three days. It was every day from eight until one o'clock. But it was definitely well worth it. And I just want to say thanks for giving me the opportunity to attend. I did a budget training, finance workshop, zero based budgeting, and new laws. But I'm going to leave it at that because there was a lot of information, but it was like, it just, it gets you going. It just gets you really excited about what you do and and how much more work there really is out there that we think that, you know, we're good, but it's like, there's so much more work out there that we need to do. And it was good. So. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy.
Can I ask a question? Thank you for that update. Thanks for taking the time to do it. I had hoped to do it and then I had stuff moving around at work. So I really appreciate it. And that's a great update. And I would, I would suggest that you you come in and speak to any of the committees that relate to the topics you went to to bring them because what's discussed at these things sometimes is best practices or things done differently elsewhere that we can learn from. In terms of the cleaning one, is there anything you heard that other districts are doing that we can think about doing that we're not? Are we are we kind of covered?
We are covered. It was interesting because there's a three village school district is now open five days a week, K through twelve. And when they spoke about their cleaning protocol, because they were one of the first school districts to go five days, it was temperature check, hand sanitizer stations. The fog machines at night. It was, I mean, it was just everything that we were doing in their cohort. So we're not doing anything that best of the best with the best numbers aren't doing. So.
That's great. Do we have, are we doing fog machines? I don't remember hearing about them.
We have fog machines.
We've ordered the fog machines. Mr. Wilkin, are you on the line?
Hi. Hello, everybody. Yes, we have the machines and they've been used every day now.
Great. Great. I also want to just add one more thing. They also said that when you come on the board, which is so true, that you come on thinking what your role and your responsibility is and how you're going to change this and how you're going to do that. They said at the reorganizational meeting, every board member should receive what what the role and responsibility is of the board member because it's really only four things. And we sometimes forget that. And we try to micromanage and we shouldn't micromanage. And it it was, it was like, oh, wow, yeah, reorg, wouldn't that be great? So just putting that out there too. So.
I think it's a good idea to incorporate next year post, hopefully, when we're person and seeing everybody in person on the, at those meetings. So something to look forward to after the cold winter.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. With that, I don't have any other unfinished business on for the evening.
Brian, did you, I see it on my agenda, perhaps it's, it's, I'm looking at a draft, but there was a discussion for the trailers for the second half of the year.
I wanted to have that discussion. I didn't see it on there, but since you bring it up, yeah, I think let's, let's just add it and discuss it as unfinished business. If you could give the board. I know I had talked to some of the members and I relayed that to Mr. Nichols to look into the possibility of acquiring by a lease trailers to continue or to further bring children back in the second half of the year. So if you want to give us an update on that, Jeff?
Sure. So Mr. Wilkin did the the majority of the work in terms of going out and getting some estimates, but the estimates that he received at this point come to about between seventy three hundred and nine thousand per unit per month. And a unit can house between two and three classrooms. Given the social distancing requirements, I would be more inclined to lean towards a unit having two classrooms and providing more space. Those units don't have bathrooms. Bathrooms represent another cost that we could add on to that. So if you do the math, basically you're looking at about forty thousand dollars a month for the number of units that we would need to bring all of the students back nine through twelve. That forty thousand dollars a month does not take into account any of the site work that would need to be done. And when I talk about site work, we're talking about not only setting the pad, if you will, for where the unit would be placed, but any utility work like electric, gas, water, lines that would have to be run, alarms that would need to be put in, and any of obviously the furniture that would be have to be placed, which is really not a significant cost related to the others. So I don't have those numbers, but I would think that it's safe to say that you're looking at a number probably in and around a half a million dollars for having this possibility for the second half of the year. Bear in mind that that in my time in Sag Harbor, we've had portables going back over twenty years ago. And at that time, they were placed in a couple of different places. At one point, they were where the middle school gym is right now. That's no longer an option. At another time, they were placed in the Jermaine Street parking lot. That's not an option unless, you know, we're going to then have our faculty and staff park in the village, which would be problematic. So really what you're left with are two options. One being the front lawn of Pearson, which I think is not a move that the community would like to see the portables there. The second option would be to place them in the rear of Pearson High School, basically on the athletic field that we just paid a significant amount of money to have refurbished, if you will. So you know, my recommendation at this point is that it that we be very cautious with regard to pursuing this for two reasons. Number one, cost. And number two, the logistics related to setting it up and when would these units actually come online? Because you have a lot of site work, but before you even get to the site work, all of these things require SED approval, which obviously requires architectural plans and things like that. And I would hate to see the district spend, you know, a half a million dollars and then have a spike and then come December, January shut down, you know, for months at a time and then lose the money. So obviously, there are different sides to the equation, but I'm just trying to give the board the pertinent information so you can wrestle with it and make your own determination.
All right. Thank you for that, Jeff. I think it's important that we look into all options. As we started out the evening discussing the possibility of just increasing another day every other week for the different cohorts. Any board questions? I'll open it up to the board on anything that Jeff just said.
Yeah, I have a question. Who would be teaching the kids in the trailers, given that right now those kids are being are livestreamed remotely? Would they just be watching the livestream from a trailer or would we have to hire a bunch more teachers?
There would be staffing implications related to what you talk about.
So it's not just the half a million that you already outlined, but we'd have to hire a bunch more teachers potentially.
It might not be teachers. What might happen is, is that those the teacher would have to alternate between a classroom perhaps in the facility right now and then alternate with a teacher's assistant who may be stationed in the portable classroom. But basically, when you said that half the students would be livestreamed or participating in it live, in a livestream format, that's accurate.
Right. So either way, they're either watching it from home or they're watching it from a trailer.
Correct.
Jeff, I just had a question. It's your goes. So so the trailers were the only other option, right? You know, renting space in any of the other buildings that we spoke about, it wasn't an option?
Well, we talked about doing that early on this year. And, you know, early on, when I go back to the thinking in July, I was of the opinion at that time that, you know, by September or October, we were likely to see a significant uptick and that we wouldn't, we wouldn't stay open. Having said that, we did talk about it and there are a lot of costs associated with renting a facility and housing students there. So costs like security personnel, probably additional teachers and or TAs because of what Jordana just spoke about. A school nurse, you know, in the day, in the era of COVID, we couldn't have a school nurse at the high school and then have her and not have a school nurse at a remote facility. So an administrator on site. All of those considerations from my perspective made renting a space, which we did consider pretty thoroughly, cost prohibitive at that time, especially given the fact that, and it's turned out to be to be true, that there are additional costs associated with COVID. Whether it's technology costs related to live streaming, whether it's additional staffing costs related to what Jordana just spoke about, which is having someone in a room to supervise the students who are viewing the livestream. So I didn't think it was a prudent move at that time. And I still think, although I understand the desire for people to return to quote normalcy, I still view it with a great degree of skepticism and caution knowing that the the finances for the district, although I think we're in a good place right now, if COVID's still around, we're going to have challenges moving forward.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff on that before we move on? Are there any questions from the public? You put it in the chat room or raise your hand. That being under public input number two, item thirteen point one. Anybody here for that?
I don't see any.
Brian, I have an old business item after we finish that.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, I don't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before we talked about the goal of having all the committees meet in November. So I'm just asking that at the next board meeting, can we get an update on that progress?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm ready with communications.
Mary, if we could put that on for next meeting, the sixteenth, please.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, I would have a motion to convene into executive session to discuss a litigation issue and the employment of a particular person.
So moved.
Is there a second? And before we vote, just for the public to know, when the board does come out of executive session, no action will be taken by the board other than our voting to close the public meeting. And with that, I'd ask you to open up the voting, Mary.
That's unanimous.
Great. I will see everybody in there. Please log off and catch your other link. Everyone else, have a good evening. Thank you very much for tonight.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.